And call the Intergovernmental Committee meeting to order. We'll go ahead and go around and do introductions, starting with Ms. Brecher.
Ms. Brecher.
Lydia Lopez-Gamboa, RESJ Project Manager.
Dani La Dozna, RESJ.
Will Fernandez, RESJ.
Elie Lowry, Board Member and Terminus Committee.
Courtney Westling, Government Relations.
Kate Wilkinson, Assistant General Counsel.
My name is Mason Dirk. I'm the Franklin Student Room and Intergovernmental Student Room.
I'm Terry Poppy, Communications Department.
Frank D. Dula, Communications Department.
Then online, we've got Director Hollins.
Hello, hello.
All right, and then we have, we're going to begin with our guest today, Elizabeth Durant.
Hello, everyone. It's so good to be with you. You can hear me okay? Yes. Awesome. So I'm Elizabeth Durant. I am current Chair of Parkrose School Board out here in East Portland, and I'm a newly elected member of the Oregon State Board Association's Legislative Policy Committee. So I'm coming in new and with lots of excitement and energy to that position, looking ahead to the next legislative session. My job on the Legislative Policy Committee, I'm Multnomah Region, representing in Position 17, along with Erin Barrow, who's on David Douglas, and then you probably know Jessica Orzade from Multnomah ESTB. So our job is to be a liaison between the 11 districts in the Multnomah Region and, of course, our paid OSBA lobbying staff in Salem in a capital that people aren't meeting in person. It's going to continue to be virtual, not only because of the pandemic, but because of renovations. So some of you are veterans, you already know all this. I'm new enough that I didn't, and so I'm now just like saying it wherever I go. So I'm kind of making a tour of introductions, getting to know all the districts that are in the Multnomah Region. You see my face and know that part of my task is to establish relationships so that when there is a need for testimony, which will be done primarily virtually in the next session, we can connect like the most appropriate person with the most on-the-ground, relevant data and personal story to talk to our legislators. So that's my job. And also then to bring back to you updates. If you have questions about, well, what is our state association doing with our dues in Salem, then I'm supposed to be able to answer that question, and I am working to be able to do so. I will say that especially for smaller districts like Parkrose, our involvement in the state association is really invaluable because we don't have resources otherwise to do that advocacy work. We know declining enrollment is hitting all of us, and so state school fund recalculation will be kind of at the top of our agenda for the next session. So I'm coming to you in the summer just to start getting the ball rolling on that relationship building. I'm totally available. I have no idea who among the massiveness that feels like is PPS would be a good person for me to connect with, but I really believe I'm a pastor also, like you, Chair Lowry. And yeah, there's no substitute for relationships. So thanks for the time for meeting me. We did send out an email survey, and that might be like the worst way to connect. I wanted to thank Chair Lowry for completing it. You're the only one from PPS. So if there's a few others who could chime in, even if it's just to say, like, a survey is the least helpful way, here's a better way, information from us, that would be awesome because, yeah, it's trying to build that network of relationships. And we know that the high turnover, really high turnover in the legislature right now, that we're kind of in a good place to build some new relationships with some representatives and senators who might be new or just getting used to the issues facing education. So that's it. That's what I've got, and thanks so much for the time. I'm happy to follow up with anybody who would like and can share my email with Kara.
Awesome. I think the best places for connection are whoever is the Chair of the Intergovernmental Committee, which right now is me, but we're having a leadership change July 1st. So it's the purview of our Board Chair to decide who is the Chair of each committee. So whoever's elected Chair will get to make that choice.
I can introduce.
And then Courtney can introduce that. And then Courtney Westling is our staff person that you have to talk to.
Okay.
Yeah, on camera. We have this awesome camera that follows whoever's speaking, so you can't see Courtney right now because she's waving instead of talking, but we'll make sure you keep in relationship. And I would say that one of my big things for the legislature is the QEM, right? To make us actually be funded at the quality education model across the state. It's a hugely high priority and to really think about how we can do better for Oregon kids.
Yep.
And then I think one of the, the next topic on our agenda today is around gun control and looking at how can we keep our kids safe and protected in our schools? And what can we as a state do to lower gun violence? And I know Director Green, who also is a pastor, has a lot of passion and has done a lot of work locally around reducing gun violence. And so there are lots of steps we can take there. And then I know one of the other pieces we're looking at, we've talked about before, is how this is more of a federal thing, but also has ties to Oregon as broadband is a public utility. So how do we help with access, especially, you know, given the pandemic and what we've learned? And our legislators are all remote, and so we know that that's, that's a reality is of how the world is changing, that more and more things are remote access. So how do we help ensure access for all students across Oregon to resources and supports through internet connection?
Wonderful. That's so helpful. Thanks for clarifying those priorities, and I will take that feedback back to our lobbyists. So thank you again for the time.
PPS will come out with a legislative agenda by the next session. That's sort of our official position, but those are my free sort of like things I've been thinking about and considering.
Yeah, and I'll just chime in. Hi, Elizabeth. Thank you again for being here and
Absolutely.
Use me as a connector here.
Are you Courtney?
I am, sorry. I'm Courtney West.
Okay, it's all right.
The other person you should get to know, and likewise, nice to meet you, is Stacy Michelson, who is the Relations Administrator for MESB. If you haven't already gotten a chance to meet her, she's
We actually have a great, deep relationship with her.
That's what I figured, but I just wanted to ask her.
Yes, yes.
She, she and I work closely with, with, with each other, with other district lobbyists, if they exist, because not all school districts have a government relations team or a person. And so we do work often with Lori and Richard at OSBA, our counterparts at COSA, Stanford Children, OEA, you know, Foundations for Better Oregon, you name it, the list goes on and on. We collaborate and connect often so that we're in alignment, not always on the same page, but most of the time. And so we, we like to, you know, be ready for a session and kind of join arms as much as possible going in.
Awesome, awesome. That's great. Thanks so much, Courtney.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Elizabeth, for joining us and for being able to serve in this role and do your work. So really greatly appreciated. All right, we're going to turn now to what was Item 1 on our agenda. It's named Gun Control Advocacy. And so I'm going to turn it over to Courtney to give us sort of an update on what's going on.
Yeah, thank you. So obviously, recent events in Buffalo and Uvalde have made it clear again what we already know, which is, you know, it's, we need more, well, at every level, we need more in place to protect our students and our families and our communities. What's happening right now, I think everyone's following what's happening federally at least a little bit. They've come out with a package that looks like they have the votes to overcome a filibuster. There's likely going to be a vote this week on that package, which will, which Kate and I were just talking about, not, not enough, but some steps forward to, to rein in the boyfriend loophole, extend background checks, and then the third thing is something that I'm not making up right now. It'll come to me. But anyway, that's, that's looking like it's going to pass, which is 20 years too late. But, you know, for, that's good. That's a good step forward. It's an election year, so it also makes sense that they want to try to come up with something. At the state level, right now, you know, it's a little early. We don't know yet what all the universal bills will look like for Salem in February at any level, but I'm sure there will be some proposals coming forward. We just in '21, or in '22, I believe, was the Safe Storage Bill, which passed. So there is appetite in our legislature. We do have, I think Elizabeth mentioned, we have a big turnover coming in elected leaderships at the state, so we will have a lot of new members. I think, as you can imagine, we're going to see, probably, it'll probably be our most diverse legislature ever because every time we have an election, that seems to be the case, and that's good. And then we also, you know, just an opportunity to educate and learn more and share our priorities with them. So I'm excited about that. The one more concrete, relevant proposal out there right now is getting signatures, and that's IP-17, which is a faith-based, and you're probably aware of it.
My church has done a signature petition.
It's a faith-based effort to add permitting and training and background checks, and it's
Ammunition, like amount of ammunition you provide at a time is reduced, yeah.
Yep. So that's, and there's some, the text of the, of the initiative is attached in the board book as well as the summary. So that's a good place to kind of start reading because they have to get, basically, I talked to somebody over the weekend who was collecting signatures, and they're shooting for 100, sorry, that use of word, 140 signatures, hoping that 100,000 of those will be verified. So it's a big lift. They have until July 8th. They're everywhere.
Oh, there, I went to, I was at a third naked ladies concert at Edgefield. They were, like, this woman was walking through the crowd and clipboard. I was at a Juneteenth celebration at a church in Woodstock. People were there, so, yeah.
Yeah, and so we'll see what happens there. I think there's a lot of, you know, groundswell of support, just given the timing. We'll see what happens. The board, and you know, Kate can speak to this a little bit, but legally, just like we've done with other ballot measures that the board has supported in the past, you just can't advocate after the referral. And actually, you guys can because you're not public employees. So employees, so I couldn't, I couldn't do anything to share information after the referral.
Right.
You all, sorry, you all can.
Yeah.
And, and so, you know, if you wanted to take a position on IP-17, and you've done, you have a history of taking positions on ballot measures, assuming it makes it to the ballot, you would be able to do that as a board.
So I think that'll come to the IG Committee once it's referred.
Once there's new leadership, yeah. And so, and yeah, it would be sometime in August or September when it would get referred.
Yeah, so it's really interesting, some of the rules around who can advocate for what and what timing. And so like as a pastor, I can, and our church can, take positions on ballot measures or on issues, but we cannot endorse candidates.
Oh, interesting. Oh, well, that actually makes sense.
Yeah, so that's a, that's like a, one of the rules of like a faith-based, you can, we can support IP-17, we can support it once the ballot measure, but I could never say, hey, vote for this candidate.
Yeah.
So.
PTA is the same.
PTA is the same way, yeah. So we can do issues on people.
Yeah. So I don't, you know, I can, I can try to answer questions about it, but I think it's pretty straightforward. It's all about getting enough signatures at this point for that measure to move forward. If it, I would not be surprised if they tried to take it on at the legislature pieces of it if it didn't make it to the ballots. And who sponsors it and what it looks like, you know, is too early to tell. But I would for sure, you know, if I had a crystal ball and it didn't make it to the ballot, I would say that's gonna happen.
And I think, you know, I, again, see where we are in the fall, but I definitely think as we look at our legislative agenda, I think gun control.
Yeah, we're trying to keep it, you know, because we could have a 10-page agenda.
Right.
Which no one would read, the diatribe of all of it. But I think trying to keep high level around school safety, because you can really think about it in not just guns, but building security and sort of all of these other pieces.
And I think, I know that Director Green has talked about this a lot, but it's also like, these are our students that are out in the community dealing with gun violence. So whether or not there's an issue at a school, we know that students are being impacted in our city right now by this violence that we're seeing. And we do know that like nationwide, people ages 1 to 19, the leading cause of death is gun violence. And we also know that beyond just like incidents at school that our students deal with, suicide and the impact of guns in that place. So I think, yes, as a school district, we want to be focused on our school buildings and safety of schools. And I think we need to look at one of the huge issues, like public health issues that is affecting our students. And so I really encourage us as the biggest school district to really think about the public health and welfare of our kids, and that gun violence is a huge, has a huge impact on our students. And I think we're seeing that across our city, across our state, and across our country. So I would personally advocate for it as a high priority. Director Green.
I would echo everything that Director Lowry stated. Gun violence is high on my priority, and I'm going to get behind everything that tries to minimize it. I'm not trying to take guns away from people. I just want to make sure that we don't need them in our schools. Our kids don't need them. And right now, I'm dealing with 15-year-olds that are running around gunning, gunning people down because they got access to guns that they're not supposed to have. So it's, it's a big deal.
Gary, did you want to weigh in at all?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
And I was having trouble yesterday with my, my stuff, so hopefully it's gotten better today. Yeah, you know, I just echo what both of my colleagues have said, you know, this is a nationwide problem. And, you know, this is a problem that we can start making steps towards solving today. You know, when we have responsible gun laws and, you know, restrictions and, you know, screening, more comprehensive screening, you know, ways to obtain guns and making sure that people are, you know, storing guns safe and making sure you do comprehensive background checks and, you know, making sure you do evaluations. And, you know, there's all kinds of things that, you know, I think we, we need to do in order to beef up access to, to guns, you know, from manufacturers to dealers and to the applicants themselves. So I am all for making it easier to reduce the gun violence and access to guns as possible.
Thank you. And you sounded very clear. So whatever was up last night, you have fixed, so.
All right.
Did you have any thoughts?
I just want to say, as like a student, I just graduated, and in my four years at Franklin, I was way too close to gun violence than I should have, and I live in a very, I live in a wealthier community. I've been very fortunate and I've grown very privileged. And at the same time, I still hear about students who have been shot. I've heard about bullets being shot at Franklin my freshman year. Like, it's constantly impacting the community. And if we don't address it, whether that's putting more mental health resources in our schools to address how the community feels with the constant normalization of gun violence. It's, or also passing IP-17, getting that on ballot, it's, it just needs to be addressed so some students don't have to constantly feel unsafe and worry about whether they're going to be able to make it through the day.
Thank you for that, Mason. I, having a teenager that's in school right now, I know some of the realities of what that feels like to go to school every day with that. We, there is a lot, I think, that we as a board and we as a district and we as a community want to be better. And I know one of the, we want our students to be safe, to feel safe in school in a lot of ways. And one of the ways is around how we are inclusive, especially as we look at equity and how we kind of change the culture, which is something that the state is also very interested in. And I know that we have this great opportunity that we, is that every district has to have an Equity Advisory Committee, and so by September 15th, and so we are going to get that done. So we are, my goal today is that we are going to move this out of this committee because the committee doesn't meet in July. And so to get us to a place where we're actually ready to have the committee ready to go by September 15th, we need to move this out today. So just so you know, that's the expectation from me, to take it to the board so we can discuss this at our next board meeting and begin the process of standing up the committee.
Taking one note, just for clarity, any district under 10,000 students does not have to have this set up until 2025.
Okay.
We obviously don't apply, but I just want to make sure that
That it's not all districts. So I'm saying it correctly. Thank you for that, Courtney. We have smaller districts in Oregon that
Need a little more time.
Yeah, because they don't have the amazing staff that we have that can help support the work of the board.
And they'll probably model theirs on ours, because let's be honest.
Yeah. All right. So Dani, Courtney, are you introducing this or should I introduce Dani? All right, Dani and team, thank you. Lydia and, I forgot your name already, Lopez, but what was your first name?
Will.
Fernandez. I'm so sorry. Will Fernandez, Lydia Lopez-Gamboa. Okay. Thank you for being here and take it away.
Sure. Well, thanks for having us. I think we wanted to just kind of share a little bit about our process. You all have a draft charter. Carter will walk you through that, and then we'll be open for questions. I guess the first thing I want to say is like, in addition to being in alignment with the rules that are stated in Senate Bill 732, this work is also a big part of our strategic plan. So in Theme 1, Racial Equity and Social Justice, under Transform Systems for Racial Equity, Goal 3 is, in service of four goals, the RESJ Advisory Council supports the implementation of the RESJ Community Advisory Committee. So this is work that we want to make sure is not just a compliance exercise, but like all of our racial equity and social justice work is woven throughout all of the fiber of our work here. So you'll see in the draft charter that we attempted to follow the letter of the law in terms of what's going on, but we also are really trying to go above and beyond. I love that Courtney said that people will copy us. We've been doing a lot of copying. So we'll talk a little bit about the timeline and tell you a little bit about kind of what we've done. But essentially, as part of our strategic planning process, we've been meeting with a small swan group of folks, representative from folks from our team, from the General Counsel's Office, from Community Engagement, to think about sort of how we can do this. And I would be remiss if I didn't mention my colleague Shanice Clark, who's our Director of Community Engagement. She and I have been sort of banding about something like this pre-pandemic for quite some time. So this really kind of just picked up on that work and tried to make sure that this is aligned. So in the charter, which I believe everyone has, we're proposing to stand up a PPS Racial Equity and Social Justice Community Advisory Committee. That is a mouthful. So we'll definitely have to, to make that sing somehow.
Because like RESJ CAC doesn't.
Yeah, it sounds like a
No, I was on a, yeah, I was on a CAC Community Advisory Committee recently, and it was like Not a great name.
Gotta get better at acronyms.
Yeah.
So you'll notice that the mission statement should seem really familiar to the board because we basically draft off the PPS mission statement, but really want to make sure that the committee is advising the school board and the superintendent, and that's mandated by the language there, about racial equity and education impacts of policy decisions, and we're collaborating to increase understanding and progress towards a set of goals. We want to make sure that we're following the racial equity, racial education equity policy, the PPS RESJ framework, our vision and our strategic plan. The purpose is to provide a diverse set of advice to both the school board and the superintendent about equity impacts of policy decisions and to also serve as a monitoring function around racial equity and social justice progress. So the language in the bill is really clear that this was intended to be something that's advisory. But if Shanice were here, she would sort of be with us to sort of talk about, like, we want to transform our relationship with the community to be not just, hey, advise us about something that we already want to do, but to really sort of like move further along that continuum of engagement so that working collaboratively and that we're working more in an empowerment, empowerment level. So this idea of mutual responsibility and mutual accountability through the monitoring function is one of the ways that we're trying to elevate the work of this group that we hope we're going to be using so much of their time that it's really worth, worth their while. So the goals are to, you know, provide space and time for student voice. When we talk about the composition of the group, we want us to make sure that we're really making this a student-driven. I think one of the, one of the goals of the work of racial equity and social justice is to make sure that as we talk about lofty ideas and big theory and policies, that we're thinking about how this really impacts the student experience. And so we want to make sure that in terms of advising superintendent and the school board that we are utilizing student voice and that this is something that is, that's a great opportunity for students to develop their leadership in doing that. So you'll notice that that's our first goal. The goal is to kind of help bring in those diverse perspectives around monitoring our progress. We want to make sure that we're developing into a community of critical friends, a group where we can talk about, where we can celebrate successes, but also speak candidly and openly and directly about things that need to improve. We also want to make sure that this is an opportunity for meaningful feedback and suggestions, that it's not a check the box, the box exercise, but this is really something that will be taken into consideration as board base decisions and as the superintendent runs the district. And we want to make sure that there's opportunities for collaboration, not just with the superintendent, but of course with the superintendent's leadership team. And we're hoping at some time to be able to re-establish our advisory team of staff. So the team duties, we pulled again straight from the language that we're advising the school board, advising the superintendent. Another language that's new in this portion says that there, that the committee is also bringing to the attention of the superintendent and the board when a situation arises in a school that negatively impacts underrepresented students and advising the board and superintendent on how we're best to handle that situation. So while we anticipate that this is going to be a board that is providing advice, you'll notice that this language is also, is hoping that this is not like a static moment in time, but that there's like a real time and a sense of progress that's happening there. And one of the things that our attorney, our brilliant legal eagle, Kate, can talk about, we've had a lot of discussion about making sure that, that folks are aware that this needs to be in compliance with Oregon Open Meeting Laws. So we want to make sure that we're as transparent as possible and making this conversation accessible. But there are some considerations that we wanted to take into account, especially if we want to make sure that we have diverse representation on the committee, that we're sensitive to issues such as immigration status and that we're not inadvertently or looking at unintended consequences for folks. Or, you know, for example, if we have a student who may not be out or a member who may not be out, that we're not inadvertently doing that. So some of the things that we're thinking about is making sure that there's a lot of opportunity for the committee itself to do some storming and forming in the way of onboarding and support and see that there's some opportunities for professional development amongst the group. So let's talk about the timeline. So letter of the law and spirit of the law. I feel like I'm in my old Lincoln Douglas debates times. So we do want to meet the letter of the law. So there is a requirement that a, that the committee must meet by September 15th. Realistically, if we want to do a really good job and get a room belong in that engagement, it really isn't sufficient time to be able to do the depth of recruitment and onboarding that we want to do. So in speaking to the letter of the law, other districts and PPS have all sort of talked that only a portion of the committee must meet. So what we're proposing in the timeline is that we have a first round of membership application and a second round. The first round will be sort of drafting on a lot of the work that we've already done with our RESJ partners to where we have like a solid relationship with them. And so we think that we can, we could sort of, if we have to compromise on time and engagement, that this is the place where we have the deepest relationship. So we're proposing that in July and August, we will do outreach. For our RESJ partners, we'll have applications that are due August 15th. The superintendent will make a recommendation to the board by August 31st. You'll notice that's the deadline for board materials because your first meeting. The statute requires that the board approves the proposed membership from the superintendent on September 6th. So once we have that approval, we would have that first meeting just with the partners on September 15th. Because I think this is an elegant solution to a technical challenge because we know that our RESJ partners have deep relationships with students, particularly underrepresented students. And so in that first meeting, we'll be talking a lot about how to Um, and so in that first meeting, we'll be talking a lot about how to make sure that we're doing recruitment for those, for students, um, from their, from their full suits that they serve. So feels like we're, we're still fitting that letter of the law. We'll start, um, pushing around membership for the remainder of the group, um, between August and September of 2022, uh, once students and families are back to school. Um, once students have had an opportunity to go through all of our amazing summer acceleration academy and enrichment activities this summer. Um, and, uh, and then also sort of like get into the school year. So, um, the second round of membership application would be due October 7th. Uh, the superintendent would recommend to the board by October 18th in time for the October 25th board meeting. Assuming all goes as planned around the board's schedule, we'll see. Um, so, um, the staff would be, uh, myself and the RESJ team. We want to work, uh, really, um, closely with Shanice, uh, Director, uh, Clark, uh, and we want to make sure that we are supported. Uh, we're proposing that team leadership, that there's a co-chair. Um, we'd love be given the makeup of the team to have an adult co-chair and a student co-chair. Um, and we are, because we're a giant district, um, we, and we want this to be as representational as possible. Um, we are trying to manage the size of the group so that it's a manageable size, but also to give as many people an opportunity to serve. So the way that we.
Concerns about the size.
Yeah. So the, one of the ways that we're going to go about doing that is propose one-year terms. And that way we can sort of cycle through as many people as possible.
I have concerns about that too.
Um, so, um, that is, uh, we want this.
I have many, I have many things I love and, and several concerns.
So let's, uh, let's talk about the membership guidelines. We just want folks to, to really focus on what it means to be student-centered. Um, and think about sort of like, um, ask all the adults in the committee to think about what that means to sort of be in leadership and be in this circle of friends while also supporting student voice and, and student leadership here. Um, we ask folks to serve a one-year term, uh, and to go through an application process, which we'll see about. So here's the meeting part. Um, so this was not, um, this was not, um, sort of, uh, you know, sort of mandated through the letter of the law. And, um, I guess I'd be remiss in saying, uh, so we've been working with a set of sort of equity directors. We've met with the OTE and got to listening sessions. And then we kind of hosted our own kind of work session just recently. We, we, it was supposed to be just the regional schools, but we had like, we had folks from Ashland and stuff. And, and so, uh, we sort of started putting it out there, like, what's your membership? Like, you know, and, uh, much smaller districts have much bigger, much bigger groups. Um, uh, but I, I found that like the, the median size was around 15 to 20. Um, and so we're right in there given the fact that we're much larger than many of the other districts. So I believe, um, uh, I just forgot the name of the district, but, um, it's one of our regional districts was, you know, upwards of 40. Um, so, uh, and I think this one is hard because, um, we do want to make sure that we are representative. Um, I think especially in something that's focused on racial equity, we do not want to make sure that we're having like one, one person from each cultural community, but really sort of like having some big enough sizes so that no one feels tokenized or no one feels like they're the only one. Um, and so, you know, we did sort of move towards like a 21, uh, member.
Yeah. There's a, I mean, I think there's a really interesting thing about organizational size and advisory committee size. And I, you know, this is from my experience in the church, that often church organizations that are larger have smaller executive kind of committees because it's, it's a relational difference and it's a role difference. Um, and that smaller churches actually tend to function better with larger executive committees because it's a different community way of showing up. Um, and so sometimes, because there are other ways of connecting in larger districts and there are things like site councils or other places. So just because a smaller district has a larger committee doesn't mean that we then have to have a larger committee. That doesn't always necessarily function well in a district of our size. Um, because, and, and I have concerns about the terms are too short and the number of people because if we really are about building relationships of trust with our RESJ partners, then I think a year is a long ti- is a really short amount of time to, to really form that. Um, and if we have so many people, then sometimes I think it can be, somebody else will do it. And so how do we have a really committed group of folks that will engage deeply over time? Um, to, to help us really change the culture. So those are some of my concerns about. I, I hear what you're saying about the intent of like wanting to draw a white net, have lots of opinions, have lots of like voices. And how do we really make sure that it's effective to the kinds of changes we know we want to make as a district? That, that's kind of where my tension point is around some of the, the size, the term length, that kind of thing.
Sure.
So I know you settled more to cover that and then I have some more questions.
Okay. Um, so we're proposing 21 total members, um, with specific representation in terms of, we'd like it to be majority student. So, uh, 10 current PPS students, um, we're hoping to have six high school students and five middle school students. And you'll notice even with that number of students, that doesn't represent across all of the number of schools or even the number of high schools. Um, and then we're also proposing 10 adults. Um, and so we're proposing five RESJ partners. Again, that's, uh, that's really just a quarter of the RESJ partners that would be representative. Um, three parents and two, uh, PPS staff. Um, and each of these categories are listed. Um, the, the language talks about.
When you say listed, do you mean listed in the law?
In the law. Um, the language talks about representation from underrepresented communities. And so we'll be, um, doing outreach for the application process and making recommendations to the superintendent. We'll make recommendations to the board based on our, our commitment to racial equity and social justice. Um, so in terms of team resources, we've talked about making sure that we're supporting the committee like we would any committee. So making sure that we're thinking about like, um, staffing, uh, ti- you know, time for, uh, you know, sort of meals, depending on what time we meet, uh, and if that's aligned to meal, meal time. And then also, uh, thinking about translation and interpretation, um, as needed. Um, so the committee, the committee will meet quarterly. Um, they, we do want to incorporate some onboarding and some, uh, RESJ training. And we want to make sure that we are, um, we're, we're spending, you know, some retreat time at the beginning of, of each year to make sure that there's some time to do some norming and participation guidelines. So that really is an effective uh, use of folks' time. Um, so the second, uh, page there is the application. We wanted to keep it as open as possible so that we could, um, kind of get to know sort of how people would approach their membership. So we'll, we ask about their experience, um, why they're interested and then, you know, sort of what, what type of experience that they have. So, um, that is what we have there. Um, I do want to, um, emphasize that this is draft. We wanted to make sure that you had an opportunity to, uh, provide feedback. We also want to make sure that we're getting some feedback from, in addition to the internal stakeholder groups that we're thinking about externally. Um, and, um, we want to make sure that we're, um, just going in open-eyed, knowing that, you know, if we could conceivably, you know, meet, quote, meet the deadline. But I worry about just given the last year that, but that staff, that parents and students have had, that asking for a participation in the committee like this would be a little bit tough. So we wanted to wait until the start of the school year so we could really be intentional, work with school communities, um, more intentionally. So that's it. Um, I guess if anyone has any questions.
I have a, I have like a bunch of notes. So the first thing I think is I, we want to be really clear. I think reading the law, um, and where we are with this, I, I think what I'm hearing, what I've heard from board colleagues feedback before this meeting, I said this, they really consider this like one of the committees of the board. And so that, that there's this sense that the board wants some ownership of this, that like this is, um, this is a board that, that we have a relationship with, just like CBRC, just like the bond accountability committee, just like we will have with the climate. Um, so, so that sense of like, it is in partnership with staff, but it is a, it's a board committee. Um, and that, that's a really important piece that for some of my board colleagues. Um, there is definitely a desire that the board needs to be involved in the selection. Um, just like we are with CBRC, just like we are with the climate charter. So to have one or two board members be part of any interview process or selection process, again, to help develop and build that relationship. Um, what I've heard from the board is that, and I, looking at the law, it does not say that the superintendent has to be the one that selects the board, um, but that the superintendent creates.
Recommendation.
Right. Let's see, it says.
So, so we've talked about that with our other school districts, um, and that's sort of like, um.
Right. So I think, I think what I've heard from my board colleagues is they would like to be the ones that, that we bring forward a recommendation together with staff, superintendent. So just one or two board members on that selection piece brings that, like we do with the other advisory committees. Um, I think what we're looking for is a sort of similar process that we have with those other advisory committees. Um, and then I, I really, I think that again, if we're, I, I'm concerned about the superintendent selecting the co-chairs of the committee. I think that that we need to empower the committee to do that work themselves. Um, because I think with, with those committees, we have folks that have served in them and have relationships. And, um, I think our superintendent we have now is amazing and would pick excellent people that could speak truth to him. But I also worry about a, a future where that we may have a superintendent who isn't comfortable with people speaking truth to power. And so to have the committee chair be selected by the committee, I think is a stronger position for, um, the voice of the committee. So I, I would be concerned about that. I think 21 people is a lot of people. Um, I, I see the intent. I think that, um, I would really think about how do we make it? There's this tension between being effective and being, um, representative. And so how do we straddle that line? And I just, it would be the largest of any of our kind of advisory committees. Um, and not that that's, I think the student-centered part is amazing, but, but I do have some concerns about that. Um, you also said that this, I see in the notes that the group is going to meet quarterly. Uh, but then you also said that they would weigh in when we have like issues at a school. So I don't see a provision then for them to have like call meetings or would there be like a subset of the group that then responds to those things? Um, you have listed out that we need to have like staff and parents in there. And I don't see that actually in the language of the bill. It says that we want to make this, the communications available to people. We want to make the workings of the committee clear to people, but it doesn't, in the law, it doesn't constitute that we have to have those certain groups. Um, so I wonder if it's like limiting to who we might get. What do you, what is your understanding of that?
The bill does provide that the committee has to be composed of parents, employees, students and community members from the school district. Those are also in the proposed OTE.
Okay.
But that's in.
Three.
Parents, employees, students and community members.
Okay. I do see that. Thank you. I didn't miss that when I was scanning it earlier.
Yep.
I just, I want to make sure that we, I, I, it's one of those things where we want to make sure people are represented, but we also don't want to limit it, right? Like, like CBRC doesn't have a teacher on it right now. We've had teachers in the past. And it would be great to have a teacher, but if there's not a teacher, we don't want to have an empty spot. Does that make, like? That's my concern there, um, just with my experience with that committee. So those are kind of my, my cons.
I, I think it's amazing. I, I think this is going to be a really great committee for PPS, but those are my sort of reading through it and getting feedback from some of my board colleagues. I think how does the board kind of have oversight of this committee in some ways? Cause it's, it's one of the sort of board committees that, um, being an advisor to us. And so how do we have that relationship?
Yeah.
I think it's really important to a lot of my board colleagues.
Yeah. So I think the, um, I think that's really helpful feedback. Um, just two questions or things to think about. Um, we talked a little bit about the staff and one of the things I wanted to make sure is to think about like, what would it need to have? Uh, sort of, we didn't think about sort of like teacher or not teacher, but we thought about represented, unrepresented staff. Um, just because we have quite a bit of, um, uh, represented staff and in many different labor partners.
Right.
And so we wanted to think about, um, the totality of the district there and just given.
Like a nutrition service worker, or we have lots of staff. It doesn't have to be a teacher, but.
Yeah. So, so I think, um, in the, the sort of rubric to evaluate, like, you know, the folks, um, there's sort of like what we're looking for, but then in terms of selection, what a lot of, um, other districts are doing is developing a rubric that shows like racial diversity, gender diversity, sort of like, you know, a geographic spread. And then so for the staff, that's kind of what we thought about. Um, I hear what you're saying about the 21 members. I think we, we had the exact same sort of thought that you did. But in talking to the other equity directors and sort of just even in talking with, um, lots of, especially because this is a racial equity focused group, I think people tend to think that like, well, if you have one white person and one native person, you're good. And so what we really wanted to do is make sure that we're providing as many opportunities for, for the diversity that is our student population. And so, um, and also there are some generational differences in opinions, especially when it comes to racial equity work, even between staff and students and even between like middle school and, and high school students, right? And so it did feel like 21 was the most manageable. I would also say that I have a lot of confidence in the team to be able to facilitate the meetings and to be able to support that group.
I think, uh, speaking of generational differences, I'm saying this because Gary and Herman are both slightly older than I am. I know that they both want to weigh in and have some thoughts as well, and I'm sure Mason does. So maybe if we can have some other board responses and then hear from the team a little bit more. Uh, let's go with, uh, Director Holland. Did you have some thoughts here that you wanted to share?
Uh, yes. Can everybody hear me clearly?
Yes.
All right. Um, so I am agreeing a hundred percent with, uh, with Director Laurie say, um, when I seen this, um, I literally thought this is a board, um, committee. Um, and so in, in that same lie, for instance, the executive sponsor should be the board. Uh, when we're looking at appointments, um, that should come from the board. Um, and the reason why I say that, I think this needs to be independent from the, the superintendent. Um, so that way the folks that are there, um, can speak truth to power without having to worry about any, any thing that comes up, whether the superintendent, you know, recommended you or not recommended you. Um, I think this is something that the board should, should take on leadership, um, of this. Um, I think it's, it's important, uh, when we talk about racial equity, that you have a, uh, committee that can really just speak their mind and want to be comfortable with their mind. And when I look at the board who is made up of the voters of the community, they have deep ties to the community, you know, and, and it's no, it's no slight on our administration and there's no slight on the superintendent. Um, but our board usually are having years and decades and decades of communicate, of relationships, um, with the community. They have a relationship with students. They're having relationships, um, those multi-year decade worth of relationships. Um, and so I think this literally needs to be board-led, board, um, approved. Um, and I think when we're looking at, um, stability as far as the one-year piece, um, I can see maybe the one-year for the, the students because they're going to be transferring in and out of, of classes. They're going to be moving up in different grades. So I think the high school or, I mean, the student piece should be one year. But I think for the adults, it might need to be at least two years so that way you keep stability going forward. With, with that, uh, but I, and it's all the appointments, I think, needs to come from the board with giving, uh, and, and in consideration, you know, with the superintendent and the, and, and whoever else he picks, uh, uh, will weigh in on their communicate, their, their, uh, their thoughts on it. But I think this needs to be strictly a, um, board appointment.
Director Green, did you want to weigh in?
Can y'all hear me?
Yes, now we can.
Okay. Um, I agree as far as, um, I, I, I guess I'm, I'm in support of the, um, of the process of it being a, um, board function and that it be, um, that it not be designated from the, uh, from the superintendent. Um, but that I, I would, um, also believe that if the board, if the board itself is responsible for, you know, deciding who's going to go there, I also believe that, that, um, the superintendent should have a, a say in it, as Gary was saying as well. Um, because he's, this is somebody that he's going to be working with. This is somebody that, you know, he's, you know, or his designate, uh, does, person he designates is going to be working with. So he should have, um, some, some idea of who they are and, but I believe the final vote should come from the, um, should come from the board. And, um, I definitely agree when you start thinking with alignment and continuity, um, similar to what we have now with our committees, similar to what we have now with our committees, even if, um, our student rep leaves and we've got people on the committee that stay for four years, they switch committees, you know, based on how the director or the chair wants to assign them. But the work doesn't get lost because we're still there for, for like four years. If everybody is leaving every year, then it could be easy to say, well, that's what the last group did. I don't know what they're doing. I don't know where they left off and, or that sort of thing. So I believe having some type of, even if you didn't want to go two years, if you did a year and six months, something, there needs to be some type of rollover so that the, the group that's there can pass on all the knowledge and everything that they worked on with the group that's coming in.
Mason, did you have something you wanted to add in?
Not too much. I mean, I, I like it. It sounds really good. Just, um, student-wise, it kind of, honestly, it just kind of struck me how high the number was, but I mean, yeah, I can see why. Y'all said.
Okay. Thanks, Mason. So what I'm hearing from my board colleagues and what I got feedback from others ahead of this meeting is that there definitely needs to be a board role on the selection and, and how that happens ahead of the vote. So I think if we can have maybe, um, as we go through this process, two board members be part of that team that's interviewing and selecting and helps, which is what we do on the other committees.
Would you mind if we, before we get to that, so I think what we're trying to do is, is sort of understand the intent and the letter, again, the spirit of the law and the letter of the law.
Yeah.
So the letter of the law says the superintendent shall, shall, shall select and the board shall approve. And so I agree with, um, like, first of all, I feel so fortunate that we, that we have the opposite problem as many of our other school, school district colleagues do. Because they're trying to sneak by, uh, uh, sneak by a committee, their board, and we're trying to, uh, like, you all set such a higher standard for it. And so I think, uh, again, I just want to say how fortunate I feel that I get to work for P P S with this board because my colleagues in districts around the state and even in our region are literally trying to like, the discussion that we started with, how do we make sure that this is not just a check the box activity and that the board will actually listen to the committee? And here we have the, we have like a board wanting to sort of like really take ownership and participate and listen to the committee. So I just want to, I want that on the record, that like, we're so fortunate in P P S to have that relationship with the board, especially on racial equity. There are folks who have lost their jobs and who feel like they can't do this work. That's not at all how we feel. So I really, I really feel thankful to have that dynamic here. That being said, so the, the law says, uh, the district, the superintendent shall, shall, shall select and that the superintendent runs the process. So I don't know if in the, I, I, I don't think there's any prohibition on the board being part of the process. The board does have to approve the final selection. And I think for us, we were sort of like, well, um, you know, let, let's give them a thing. We can absolutely spell out a really collaborative process so that you are, you know, the board is sort of like involved every step of the way and is aware of all the things. Kate, I don't know if Kate wants to talk to the like, you know, sort of how specific, because I know in the, the rules, it is very sort of like, it spells out like a process that the, just the superintendent runs. That's all.
Well, I think what we're saying as a board is we're asking to be part of that process. And so that might be a conversation for us and our employee.
Yeah. Um, to Danny's point, O D E has draft rules that are providing more detail on the selection process. And to, to Danny's statement, the school district superintendent is responsible for coordinating the member nomination process and proposing approved finalists to the board. Board is responsible for appointing members proposed by the superintendent. So, I mean, there isn't anything prohibiting, you know, board members from being involved in the selection process. But the rules, and presumably these will be adopted by O D E this month, is that the superintendent is going to propose finalists and then people would.
So I think what I'm hearing is that board members would like to be part of the process for selecting the finalists.
Yeah, I think we can, we can sort of incorporate that into there.
That's great.
I think the other piece is the art and science of the board. The, the committee is advising both the board and the superintendent.
So I can see that collaborative piece. I, I did want to get to the two other issues. So I think that, that's one piece of tension. And I think figuring out a way that the, the board members can be part of helping select. I think the other two pieces that I wanted to make sure that like the feedback we're giving you is in alignment with the law, is the length of term? Is that, is the one-year limit in the law?
No.
Okay. So I think what I'm hearing is that we'd like to, and I, I do, having served on C D R C, when I was on C D R C, it was a two-year term. I know sometimes it's been moved to three-year terms.
And I think what, I think what Director Holland proposes in her solution, I think we were trying to figure out, like, how can we engage as many students as possible? And so we just, same terms for everyone, but a two-year term for adults and a one-year term.
And I would actually like to propose a nuance to that, which might be that the group we start with, those Res Day partners that we specifically like recruit in the beginning, maybe have them be a three-year term and the other folks a two-year term and then students a one-year. And the reason I say that is one of my favorite things about the school board is that we have a revolving, so like not everybody changes all at once. So like I was already on for two years when Gary and Herman came in. So I can help them and say onboard because it is an extensive process and we can like collaborate. So if there was, and I think that was how C D R C used to be of like, people roll off at different times because it can be daunting work to come into. And how do you help bring people along? And I'd also like to see the possibility of renewing terms. So if someone wants to reapply, that that's a possibility. And, and that the student could reapply. If they're doing a one-year term and they, like they're a junior, but they want to do it again their senior year, they could reapply. It doesn't mean they'd get it again because we might want to have a new voice, but I'd love to see that as an option. And if we, I mean, if things were perfect, we, everybody would have two-year terms after this first round, right? So that it's like, there's always a year overlap so that, that there is some continuity and leadership, if that makes sense.
Yeah, I think that's a really valuable perspective and I think that the feedback is really helpful. I think maybe some perspective for the board is also that, while volunteer service, nobody does it like our school board.
Right. It's hard. It's a lot.
It is a lot. I think that if our, our partners, you know, are often called by every jurisdiction, not just P P S to do that. So, so part of the, part of the idea of the turnover was to also sort of think about how nonprofits and C B Os, especially ones, that they're able to sort of like grow and develop their staff and give opportunities, not just for the director or the, the sort of like senior level staff, but also for, you know, staff at all levels. So I think it's, I, I want to hear their feedback, but, you know, we can anticipate that many of our partners would be like, that's amazing. But often a chill on participation is some of the bigger committees. And again, like, the, we're in a totally different situation because we have such a great board. Like, you guys are volunteer service to the max.
But I mean, but I know that our partners that we're looking to do this, this isn't the only thing they're volunteering to do. I think that's the other piece is like, oh, I don't help with the band. Like, I don't volunteer with the band at Cleveland because I'm volunteering on school, right? But I know other parents are volunteering with the band and they're volunteering with the senior party and the P T A and like. And so they're making has like a commitment, but just in lots of other places that asks someone to commit.
Two years, yeah.
But, but I think, I mean, we, we have people who they sign up, they only serve one year. It doesn't work out for them. But I, I would like to see us eventually get to a rotating model so it's not, so that the two years are.
Yeah.
So maybe, maybe this first year it's a one-year and a two-year. So some people can only commit to one-year. Great. You can sign up for a one-year term or a two-year term this first time. Where are you as we launch this? And then people, so instead of a three-year and a two-year, it'd be a one-year and a two-year, just so we have some staggering.
Totally. We might find that like students want to serve longer or like, you know, that maybe it's a nine-month or not a year, but it's a nine-month. So I think there's plenty of, of thing. I, I think just like the perspective of like, uh, longevity and continuity is so important.
Right.
And also, they're pretty stretched.
Right.
Everyone's pretty stretched.
It's that tension, right? And that, and that goes back to the size of the committee, that tension too around, we want to have a lot of diverse voices. We don't, I mean, I think one of the things, again, I'm going to care about C D R C because that was the committee I served on before I was on the board, so that's my context. But we had some, some folks join C D R C and it felt very isolating, right? To be the one, you know, to be the one person of color who's responsible for all of the perspectives of color on the C D R C. So we want to make sure that we have like, um, plenty of folks. But I do think 21 can be unwieldy, especially when you're, like, facilitating a meeting or like, and I know you all are amazing and so that structure will be really tight, but. So what I'd like to see in the charter that comes forward to the board after this meeting is to, to look at those terms, to look at the board role in the selection process and to look at that, that 21. Is there, is there a way we can? I don't know. It's, it's so, it's such a hard number, right?
Yeah, well, I mean, I guess.
And maybe the thing is we can live into it and, and say, okay, we want to reduce it to nine. Or is it better to start with 10 and live into that and see what it's like and then grow it? Or is it better to start with 21 and say, this is too unwieldy, we want to shrink it? I mean, what, like, what's the way to go with, like, once we live into a thing, we learn and grow and adapt? So I'm not sure which, which side of that coin is the better way to try.
So I think my, I'm pretty open. My philosophy is a bigger party is a better party. I think. It's the way that we try to roll with Res Day. Because I do, I do think that there's, I hear what you're saying about unwieldy and not being able to get done. But I do think that there is a chilling, inadvertent chilling effect of making something too small.
Yeah.
Where I think what we really want this committee, we want to be as inclusive as possible. And I'm talking about not welcoming, I'm talking about shifting power.
Yeah.
And so to be able to do that, like, we do have to stretch on being able to, to work with the, with the complexity and the multiplicity of perspectives. And so I feel like 21 is too small. But, um, so I was like, so we should have said 40 and then got to 21. I, I don't know.
Okay, so I, I don't pay with 21 as long as we keep our continuous learning, right? Like, is this actually, and I have to say, I think that maybe not all the middle school students will make all the meetings, right? Because life, or any of the committee members, life happens for all of us.
Well, we may not get applica, I mean, I think one way to know it's too many is that we may only get like, you know, folks who, you know, we may only get to 15.
Yeah.
And so we can always try to think about like what growing up means.
Yeah. So I think the timeline is great. I really think it's important that we have this committee stood up by the 15th. I mean, we've had, what, 10 months that since this law has passed? I think it's really important for P P S, given the, the values we have, to, to start on time. I do appreciate the two-tiered thing so we can both start on time and honor what the law has asked us to do and also make sure we're doing well on the student recruitment and the parent recruitment part. I think it's really important that we have a board role in selection. I've heard that overwhelmingly from my colleagues. And I think this draft that we have to look at the terms. So those are the kind of free areas. Is there anything else that I've missed that you've heard in this meeting that might be feedback with me?
What is your expectation? Is this like, is it draft coming forward for more people? Was this for Tuesday's meeting?
I would like to see it on Tuesday's meeting so we can move forward with the timeline. Because I know you're going to start recruiting in July and I think we need an approved plan.
So, so I, I think the, the one caveat is that we haven't done a lot of external funding with this either. And so I think part of the, part of the success of this will be sort of not only taking in the board feedback, but also larger community feedback. So we got your feedback as a student, but we haven't had a chance to sort of, uh, go through that with, with folks.
So I thought you had this timeline of you've met with Res Day partners, that you've kind of talked to other people in the development of this.
This was other equity advisors and equity folks behind this.
Okay.
So I think part of the challenge has been is that the rules are, have still been draft. So the draft rules just came out in like, in March and they haven't been finalized. So we've been sort of like playing this cat and mouse potato, hot potato game of sort of like, how do we do intentional sort of outreach, but also know what.
So could we have this by the first meeting in July? Be part of that meeting? There is a meeting, there's one meeting in July. Roseanne has given me a look because I think we had tried to just have that be consent agenda and leadership. But I, but if we don't approve this till August, then that's. Yeah, I mean, if we could approve this, it would be best to approve it on Tuesday, the 28th, if that's at all possible.
Yes, and.
Well, and we can add it to the, I mean, I think we're going to honor, we're trying to honor staff time by not having the July meeting be a field day. So, and, and we're hitting up against the September 15th deadline. So it's all of those pieces trying to be respectful and responsible of all the sort of shareholders in this moment.
Yes.
Yes. Okay. So I will look for it on the June, just that.
I mean, again, it's up to the chairs instead of the July. She wants the July. I would just send the reminder out there.
Yes, I would like to see it. I, I will, let's say this, our committee is referring this to the full board. We'd like to see with the changes that we've asked for. And then the chair will put it on and you all can negotiate with the chair.
Yeah, I think the, the caveat too is, is like, in the spirit of continuous improvement, could be that we come to you in August and we're like, the community rejected this and they want something else completely. In which case we would bring to you a new, an updated.
Yes.
Revised.
Let's do that. So like, let's bring this with the changes and then we can approve it and then we can always adapt. Like, we change policy, we change rules, we adapt things. Yeah, we can revise the charter. And, and maybe that we revise the charter six months in or three months in or like as we live into it, we can.
Just be it, yeah.
Well, I mean, that's what continuous improvement is. Like, you learn and you're like, okay, we need to fix this and then we do it.
Absolutely.
I mean, that's what, my next meeting today is policy committee. And we're, sometimes we're revising policies that are like older than I am. But some of them are more recent that we're continuing to learn and adapt. Well, thank you all for, this has been a huge amount of work and I love the like, you know, insight and detail and really willing, willingness to, to change culture and shift power. And I see that's evident in the goals and the duties. And like I said, I'd love that you've, you've gone beyond the letter of the law, Danny, to this, the spirit and, and really what's important. So thank you for that work.
Yeah, no, thanks to the board and Kate has been amazing. Kate and Mary Kane have been great. And Shiddy's isn't here, but she's also been.
I just want to check back in with my fellow committee members. Is there anything else you want to add on? This is kind of a big, big one. Is there any other thoughts you have that you want to say before we, we release our amazing Res Day folks?
I have nothing new to add.